Chambers, City Hall 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. Tonight, the Sandpoint City Council and Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission are holding this special meeting for the purpose of a joint working session on the update to the Sandpoint Comprehensive Plan. No final decisions will be made during this evening's meeting, and members of the public will have an opportunity to comment. If you wish to comment, you will need to please complete the comment sign-up sheet located on the table by the door and hand it to the clerk at the front of the room. I'll go back to the room. For the record, I'm Mayor Jeremy Grimm, also President, our City Council President, Jason Welker, Counselor Joel Spiro, Justin Dick, Kyle Schreiber, Pam Duquette. Councilwoman Rule is absent this evening. At this time, I will yield the floor to the Planning and Zoning Commissioner Chairman, John Hastings, for a role called Commissioner's Present and confirmation of a quorum.
We have some. Mr. Dunkel, Mr. Remar, Mr. Simmons, Mr. Torpey, and Mr. Benner. And I am the Chairman, John Hastings.
Sounds like you have a quorum. Excellent.
We do.
We'll now proceed with our work session, picking up at Chapter Four. Public, thank you for joining us tonight, and those online, thanks for attending. If you weren't here for our last working session, what we did was kind of walk through each chapter, looking at the public comments gathered, both at the open house and online. Tonight, in the absence of any planners on city staff, I am going to be running this. Rest assured, I have some planning experience, but bear with me, because we're going to just do our best here. So we'll be going through the documents, chapter by chapter. Last time, there was a process where we stopped on each bullet point and discussed the comments. I think the challenge with that is some are comments, and some are opinions, and some are actually directives and great suggestions. So I will probably, I think tonight, I'm just going to pull those up instead of reading each one, and I'm going to defer to the council to identify any of those comments that you feel we need to address. Not to take away from those comments, it's just we've got the better part of eight chapters to move through, so I know the public wants us to get this to hearing as soon as possible. The other change I'd like to make is, rather than waiting for the public to hear us work through the chapter, and then potentially have us miss something that the public really wanted us to focus on, I'm going to ask the public to speak to each chapter on the front end when we just start it, just so that way, I feel like we'll be able to incorporate their concerns and comments on that front end. So if there's no objection or discussion on that process, we will begin. And again, if you have to step out tonight or leave us online, we will aspire to move through this draft planned, making any minor or other changes that there's general consensus on. We won't be making a decision on the plan tonight. Once we get through the draft, we will be noticing this for public hearing before the City Council, and at that time, we will actually be taking on the record public testimony and potentially adopting the comp plan. There will be a lag. We do have some formatting and related wordsmithing to do based on the changes, so it'll probably be two or three weeks between conclusion of this process and the hearing, but that's sort of where we're headed. Thank you all again for being here. And with that, is there any council or planning commission comments or questions? Excellent. Excellent. So with that, I guess we'll start with Chapter Four, page 37, which is the Land Use and Growth Chapter.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, just real quick, for folks online, do they just raise their hand to speak, or is that how?
You know, Mr. Simmons, that's a great question. I learned the lesson today, and I take full responsibility for it. We errantly scheduled two public engagement sessions today, and it seems that our Zoom license only has one license.
Oh, no.
So they are using Zoom at Community Hall for the pickleball court layout conversation. We're using Teams, and to that point, I am not entirely sure if Teams allows, and literally, Cassidy and Melissa were able to put this together and get it late in the last hour or so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Those participating remotely on Teams will have the opportunity to comment, and there is an option for them to raise their hand at the appropriate time when you call for comment.
Beautiful. Thank you. So with that, ask the public, is there any public that would like to comment on Chapter Four, who will be then working through it as a body up here, as the land use and growth component?
I just have a question here.
Sure.
Wouldn't it be better to hear what the council and the commission has to say about each chapter before a person like myself might be able to ask a question after each chapter, rather than before each chapter is discussed?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Fritz. That's sort of the way we approached it last time, for the purpose of expediency. I hesitant to do it that way again, because if we work through the chapter and then have to go back, it's a little less fluid. And I just, I also want to, language is very specific, and you may not, might not have intended this, but you said "ask questions." This is really, it's really for comments. It's not for us to really explain. Obviously, there's nuances, but this is really for you to give the council feedback on language that hopefully you've all had a chance to review and have some concerns or comments or even support.
That's my problem. I haven't had time to review.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, you will get another bite at this, so to speak. It will be coming for public hearing in the next, well, as soon as we finish this process. But thank you, Ms. Fritz. How's the boost plan going?
I'm embarrassed to say, but I did want to say something about that, so I just wasn't sure where.
I think it'll become apparent, maybe under our Park section. Okay. With that, any public comment on Chapter Four, either in person or online?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not aware of anyone who's signed up or wishes to speak on this chapter at this time.
And just for the benefit of the audience, do we have a large crowd online, or a handful, or?
We have about four participating online currently.
Excellent. All right. Moving on, council members, we'll just start on page 38. We can look and see if there's any public comment. It doesn't appear there's any specific markings.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, just another question. Which version are we working from? Because there's a version that is clean, without public comments embedded. There's one with, which one are we?
We are working on the version.
I guess I could look on the screen.
Yeah. We're working on the version with the public comments embedded.
Which is in our packet for tonight's meeting. It's Agenda Item Four, Attachment Two, Sandpoint Draft Plan, Online Comments, if you want to have it on your screen.
Again, just for the public, I think council and planning members know this, these chapters are aspirational. The first starts with sort of the setting or the context, description of the area, then we move into some of the facts and figures, and then we move into the goals and aspirations and policies for this specific area or topic. So does council have any comments on this first page, page 38? I'm in an awkward position here, but I'm going to just make my comments. I probably won't get to vote on this, but I feel, I feel as though I should provide some thoughts, my thoughts on this. On this page, we have the word "heavy commercial," heavy commercial slash industrial. And again, going back to language, it's really important, in the land use planning world, there is a very, very different interpretation of heavy versus light industrial. Our current comp plan in zoning really emphasizes light industrial. Heavy industrial can include things like smelting, or processing, or crushing, steelmaking, and I would recommend that we strike the word "heavy" throughout the document. It's really, if you think of an industrial, you know, industrial areas of maybe Spokane or Gary, Indiana, that's really heavy industrial. I think it was probably an oversight of the author, but in the world I work in, heavy industrial is a big thing, and I'm not sure it pairs well with what I've heard my friends and community members want for our future industry here. So that would be a suggestion I would make.
I'm curious, does that, Mr. Mayor, is that intended to refer to heavy, because the word, actually, the term "heavy industrial" is not used anywhere in the document, but this is heavy commercial slash industrial?
Yeah.
Is there anything like heavy commercial within Sandpoint that you know of?
I've never.
What is heavy commercial?
I've never heard that term in a planning context, so I've only heard "heavy" and worked under "heavy industrial."
Right.
So.
So why not just strike "heavy commercial" and just leave this as "industrial"?
I think it's describing both types of uses, so maybe just striking "heavy." I would.
So then, the previous paragraph is titled "commercial."
Yeah.
We'd have to have some clarification of what the difference between those two uses.
We would. We would.
Are any of those uses described under heavy commercial industrial actually commercial at all, or are they all considered warehouses, mini-storied, storage yards, auto repair?
Yeah, those are all.
Industrial.
Those would all fall under current light industrial zoning.
Right.
So that would work, taking out heavy, well, heavy commercial and just calling it light industrial.
Well, do we, Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering, do we pick up the language from the land use plan for the purpose of that paragraph? Do you know what I mean?
Oh, from the actual map? You know, that's a good question. I would have to.
It's on 77.
Thank you so much. Look at you. Is that consistent with the land use map, are we calling it?
You say it's on 77. It's the, it's the actual page 77, that guy.
The comment?
Yeah.
It's just below the comment.
Yeah, it just says "industrial slash commercial."
Industrial slash commercial. Yeah, I would, I would either feel more comfortable giving staff the latitude to work through that and make it appropriate, but I think my goal here is, I want to make sure we're not talking about encouraging heavy industrial. No objection to modifying the document to clean it for that?
I agree.
I agree. Okay. We'll, we'll take some.
Question for you while we're on this subject. Do we know, would like pole yard, for example, would that be considered heavy industrial?
Right now, it's authorized in our light industrial zoning or in our industrial business zoning. My, my history with this is, it's really, really focused on, and I could, I don't have it right now, we do have the American Planning Association Planner's Dictionary, which describes these. I think if Cassidy can capture that, we'll make sure it doesn't put an existing business as non-conforming, but the goal is, you know, smelting, ironworks, rendering plants, things like that are probably not highest and best use in the city limits.
Agreed.
And as I was about to say, some of these things, there'll be some nuances if we get a general consensus without making a decision. Staff can have the latitude to change that, and we'll, we'll reference how we change that and where we change that in the document.
So did we just go with industrial?
Yeah, or light.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Dunkel.
Asphalt plant, concrete.
You know, without having that dictionary in front of me, those are existing uses in town. At the very least, they'd be legally non-conforming, meaning they can operate, there's an expansion clause, they needed to expand, but we would not, if they did fall into that category, they would not be allowed to establish new facilities in our city. But if Cassidy can make a note of that, we'll, we'll comment on it and make sure that we're not adversely affecting what we have today, while preventing rendering plants and smelters and things like that. Those were my only comments on page 38. Moving on to page 39, are there any comments from the council on page 39?
I had a note on the bottom to add a hyperlink to access maps, and I don't know who had suggested that.
To access maps?
Yeah, these maps, these.
Okay.
I wrote it down, but I don't know who had requested it at one point.
We can look into that and make them applicable. That's something. Some of them maybe just be graphics and not, you know, just sort of maps drawn or.
No, I think they were.
Other ones certainly.
Into the land use.
Yeah, other ones certainly are. So if Cassidy can capture that, we will.
I would suggest maybe having in the land use chapter, a link to the city maps website, which has overlays, the GIS site, which has overlays for everything, including ACI, airport overlays, current zoning, administrative boundaries, everything else.
It does. I mean, you name it.
Mayor, I have a comment on this page.
Sure.
Toward the end, in the last large paragraph next to the map, it uses the phrase "that the city would propose." And I'm wondering why that suppositional clause is there? I mean, is the city proposing it? Is it? I know that there is going to be some kind of work and negotiation to establish the boundaries that are proposed in this map five.
Yeah.
Or something close to it. But is this to sort of soften the idea of, why the word "would," I guess?
This is sort of guiding the work that we'll do once those negotiations begin with the county. So this is affirmative, sort of a little stronger than affirmative. It's directing the city to propose a smaller ACI.
Okay, so it is more definitive, not less. Okay, I was reading it wrong.
That's the way I read it.
Sorry. Okay.
Moving on to.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
So there's a comment about putting churches in the quasi-public slash institutional land use category because churches are private property and could be sold. Would that create a situation where they would only be allowed to be another church or one of these other uses, oftentimes they're found in residential areas? And I can think of one instance where a church was recently sold and.
I'm just getting some messages from the public. I want to make sure it's. So it's really the use, and that may be more appropriate when we get to the land use. If it's, if I miss this, and it's specific to, to this page, I think we can address it, but on the land use map, I, too, have some comments about the quasi-public areas. For instance, our property on east of Baldi, where a lighthouse facilities and Pizney are right now. I think those designations could limit us, so I think we may want to look at those once we get to the land use map area. But was, were your comments specific to page 39?
Oh, just because it had a paragraph about it.
Okay.
I'm happy to discuss it on the land use map.
Okay. Great. And, and your question is, use is allowed. If the use were extinguished or ceased, then it's the building and the uses that are allowed in that building that would be committed. If somebody built a big church and the church left, then they would have to find a quasi-public use for that. It looks like we did have a couple of comments, comment 58 and 59. But we will move on. I think everyone has reviewed those. Page 40, Future Land Use Plan.
This page is, I think, quite useful as it distinguishes between, for the, for people reading the document, between future land use and zoning, which is a common source of confusion among the public.
Yeah. It's great among great government members.
It has industrial, commercial.
I hear none, so moving on to page 41, where I did have a comment. But I defer to the council before I jump in with my.
I'll say this, Mr. Mayor, in terms of these new definitions, we went round and round and round quite a while in planning. To be honest, I'm not sure we have a critical distance to actually look at it correctly. So I would recommend folks actually look at the land use map relative to what we've historically had and the changes that were made. I think the improvements are pretty strong, to be my two cents.
Well, my, my only comment is, this lot size is from 4,000 to 7,000 square feet. Just for context, when I arrived in '07, in this low density, which used to be residential A, minimum lot size was 10,000 square feet. I thought the work between '07 and '13 was pretty progressive and took us down to 5,000 square feet. In addition, we did recognize the original lots of record, some of those narrow ones that have the, some people call them shotgun or bowling alley homes, we have some up in March. But I guess my comment here is 4,000 is even further, and what I get conflicted with is, we love Sandpoint, we've done preference surveys of what parts of Sandpoint do people prefer and like and why. We've looked at the lot sizes. In 2006, we did an analysis where the public thought that South Sandpoint with an average lot size of 6,000 square feet was pretty ideal. And I, I know we're balancing infill and efficiency, but at the same time, by going from the five today, which we hear feedback on, to even four, seems to me that we may be changing the character of town with good intent, but potentially really walking away from, or moving in a direction away from what a lot of people generally agree is a pretty nice lot size and fabric. So my thought is, we keep it 5,000 to 7,000. We've, we've added the ADU provisions, which allows for some densification, but I can tell you, there's a number of lots in town where you could buy, if it goes down to four, scrape the buildings and put up two homes, and I think that would fundamentally change the character of Sandpoint. So I just raised that as a concern, that I think it should stay 5,000 to 7,000, where it is today, and we're still seeing, even with that 5,000, a lot of lot splits. So I just throw that out there.
Is there a, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
Is there a happy medium to be had where we could allow for smaller lot sizes under sort of conditional use or something? Because I do think that we need to prioritize infill in our existing neighborhoods, and we could definitely render some lots completely useless if you were to limit to minimum lot size of 5,000. Like you said, the lots of record are smaller than that, and I could point from our parking lot to some buildings that are really nice on 3,700 square foot lots, so.
To answer your question, we could, I mean, if this, this is aspirational, so we can obviously address it in the zoning and the zone changes. I will point out, and you're probably aware, we do have a couple of provisions that do allow much smaller lots. One is the cottage provision, which allows you to basically build a unit on 2,500 square feet in a cottage development pattern. And then, of course, we have, if somebody could gather up two acres, our PUD standard, planning unit development, allows you to basically throw out all the rules through a planning unit development and come up with your own design and density. We could amend that two-acre requirement to something lower, so maybe it's an acre, if you can aggregate an acre. But, you know, this doesn't bind us, it just seemed like there is this continual pressure to go to smaller and smaller lots, and I just throw out as a question, at what point have we fundamentally changed the, the character and the fabric of what for eons people said is the quaint, essential, wonderful community, with yards big enough for kids to have friends over and play and, and do things like that? And it's, it's more a philosophical question, and I'm not, you know, condemning it, I'm just saying, is 5,000 sufficient, or are there other opportunities, or should we continue to go smaller?
Mr. Mayor?
Who's that? Councilman, I mean, Commissioner?
Remar.
Remar, thank you.
Just call me Shorty. Okay. Just bringing up real quick, talking about lot sizes, is this, this cottage plan, there was one of those plans implemented along Division Street, and there's questions that I'm concerned about, snow storage. I mean, in the little space that they're going to park all the cars, because there's no parking on Division, there's not enough room for cars in snow storage. So where's the snow going to go, but out on Division? Or the cars are going to be parking on Division? So in essence, to, you know, the, the lot sizing, you know, I had nothing to do with it, but, and, you know, given dollars and cents, maybe people take advantage of it, but I, I do think that there is a limit, or should be a limit, to how small you can make something, because I think a lot of people don't remember '96, '97, the winter. We had another one of those, I don't even know what First Avenue is going to be like. But, you know, I think we need to be a little careful. That's all, just mentioning it.
Mayor, I like your comments. Appreciate them.
I do, too.
And just to address Mr. Ivan Remar, you know, that's something we could tweak in the zoning. In theory, snow storage should be considered on that site plan, and I think everyone's aware, I think, is that the second, or maybe even the first cottage development we've had under that provision? So it's a bit of a demonstration. Hopefully, you know, we'll probably learn something from it, and you all will learn what we need to tweak in the zoning, but I think that's a good point to make, for sure. So what I'm hearing from a couple council members is no objection to going to keeping it at the 5,000 to 7,000 instead of going down to 4?
I think it's 5,000.
I have, I mean, I'd just point out, looking along Walnut, Division, further south at, what is that, Spruce and Division, we've got quite a few 3,500, 3,700 square foot lots. On eight tenths of an acre, there's 20 single-family dwelling units along Walnut there. Actually, maybe less than that, because one of them does not have an ADU, which was an option when those were built. That would not be possible if we limit lot sizes to 5,000 square feet.
Right.
I mean, of course, we're not limiting anything in our comprehensive plan, it's aspirational, but the, the fact that we were able to house average, average house, number of residents in a house here is 2.5, I believe, so that's up to, what, 50 people living on eight cents of an acre in single-family homes? That's pretty cool that we can do that in Sandpoint by allowing these smaller lot sizes. So if we, if we aspire to prevent that sort of development in the future, while at the same time, talking about workforce housing and, you know, affordability, we've got to realize that that decision is consciously going against the value of affordability and workforce housing in Sandpoint. So I just point that out, if, if everybody thinks that we should aspire for, you know, to prevent future developments such as we've seen in the last few years, then I'm not going to get in your way, but I just want to point out the conflict that that creates with our other values in this comp plan of affordability and workforce housing.
Thank you, Councilman Schre, I mean, Welker. And just to add just some detail to that, that area that I mentioned is just what is yellow on this map. It's the low-density residential, not the vast majority of town. So it wouldn't affect the orange, the blue, the red areas or those. So it would just, you'd just be sort of the, I mean, clearly built out at this point, honestly, but.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman, or Commissioner Dunkel? And I'm saying that just so folks on the, on the video know who's speaking.
Appreciate it. I would, I would echo that last comment of, we've heard a lot of, a lot of public comment over the last few years have been about affordable housing and what can we do to, to help that. I'm not, I'm not advocating that lowering it to 4,000, you know, solves that problem, and also the fact that 4,000. And also the fact that four thousand, it doesn't say that every lot is available to become four thousand now, which I think is important. I, I think maybe the problem is that showing four to seven kind of says, hey, everything could be four, when I don't think that is the case. But the idea that some could be four, maybe some option that there has to be extenuating circumstances or if, if one lot that's currently twelve thousand, well, that, maybe that works out better to be three lots instead of two big lots, maybe. But I would, I would say that the affordability factor has, has been such a big thing. And, and I, I, I would think that, you know, if we, if, if one lot could become three instead of two, all of a sudden, that's another family to live there, which I do like. Also, as somebody that's grown up here, yeah, the bigger, bigger lots, bigger sizes is more appealing. But it also makes it probably a little more unaffordable for the average people, so.
That's, that's a good point, Mo, because if you think about the, the typical lot size in South Sandpoint, the, the yellow zones on our map, South Sandpoint and other parts of town is six thousand square feet. Allowing down to four thousand does not allow for a, a short plat that splits that into two, three thousand square foot lots. But if you have a double lot, like the one right next to my house with the single, very small home on it, it might make sense for that short plat to occur someday so that there's now three houses on that gigantic, mostly empty lot next to my house. And that wouldn't be possible if we limit the lot sizes to five thousand square feet. But it would be if we keep it at four thousand. So that, that, how many cases are there? There's probably no more than a couple dozen lots that are affected by this in all of Sandpoint, I would guess.
Yeah, but people do try to aggregate lots. I, I guess the other thing I just bring to the table is, keep in mind that we have the impervious and building footprint. Probably, you guys are super familiar, council may not be as familiar. So right now, you can go forty percent building footprint, forty percent hard surface, parking or sidewalks. So I'm at, imagine you have a four thousand square foot lot with an ADU, which we allow now. So that's gonna be forty percent. You add hard surfacing for parking, you're now at eighty percent. I mean, you're, you're really talking about eight hundred square feet potentially non-permeable or, or permeable surface on a lot. I mean, that has impacts for stormwater, that has impacts for light, air, solar access. Again, I, I don't know what the right number is, I don't know when we get there, but I, I know we've come really far since two thousand and seven. And this seems to be going further. And with the concepts and control, concerns about ADUs intensification, I just, I just raise it as have we gone part of, because remember, we also allow ADUs on these lots now, and we didn't historically allow that.
I would echo both of their comments and continue to raise that concern.
Two councils.
I still keep the mic on.
Like to keep it at five, two, two at four, going down to four, and I think I would prefer to stay at five. So again, council members, this isn't a decision, because you'll be hearing this at, at public hearing, at which point you can make a motion to change it and we can actually have a vote and decide on specific things. So this is just sort of to set the placeholder as we enter into hearing. Any other comments on page forty-one? Moving on to page forty-two.
There's that industrial commercial if you wanna keep.
Yeah, I had a comment there just to add light industrial, pretty much everywhere there's industrial. If that's not objectionable to anyone.
Light industrial, okay, so not industrial commercial.
Yeah, well, yes, I think that would be the goal there. As long as that doesn't prohibit the commercial types of activities we allow today there. Looked like there was any public comment on this page, so we'll keep moving along in the interest of time. Page forty-three.
Just the one about the acronym, but it is defined in the list of acronyms, it's just not right there.
Oh, sending areas and receiving areas.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, transfer development right. We can add an acronym there, so people know what we're talking about. Catch that, Cassidou, awesome. Hey? And. Page, yeah, that was page forty-three, yep. Okay, moving on to the land use map. This could be. I think this is, this will have some pretty good discussion here, so. You know, Councilman Trevor, you, you kind of brought this up, the quasi-public areas. Now, this map is aspirational, it's our future vision. So in theory, the council and planning commission would be, when, when their approach for a rezone to match this, typically the planning commission's gonna, and the council's gonna have the discretion to say, the time is right. Yeah, our future land use map calls it that, you know, you know, in the future. An example might be if there is a, an area that was going from something to commercial. And if we had a bunch of vacancy in our commercial core, and we said, we don't need any more commercial right now. You know, when our core is filled up, yeah, we'll need more, the time is right in the future, but not today. So just because this is there doesn't mean we have to, we would ever be forced to implement the zoning to match this today. It's discretionary, whether the timing's right and some other factors. But with that said, and of course, we can change this in the future. The, the, the areas I saw that I at least wanted to maybe bring up are the city-owned but leased property. Let's see, I can maybe circle it. Right here, Baldi and North Boyer. If you're not aware, that's gonna be coming up for twenty, I think, no, it must've been a forty year lease, it's gonna be coming up. And the city's gonna get that back. Not only is the road in the transportation master plan, Baldi Mountain, concept for the road to come across to ninety-five and two there, but that, that is one spot if the city ever wants to actually engage in some kind of creative or portable housing with a land trust or to decouple the cost of land from the house, that's, that's about the only place in Sandpoint that we own, other than the, the part across Baldi that we could do that. So I was thinking maybe residential, I mean, right now, it's fairly industrial, light industrial. That area just was one that kind of jumped out as future, would, do we really want that public in the future? Maybe it's a city shop there, I don't know, it just seemed a little bit constraining. And the other site I, that was also quasi-public is this area behind the Forest Service. It's, it's clearly quasi-public today, but that's almost six acres back there, that if the Forest Service were ever to move out, I would hope that is a prime area for some infill housing. So again, this is aspirational, what are we hoping for twenty years from now? Nothing against the Forest Service, but I would hope twenty years from now, you know, the majority of that area might, might be more utilized for residents' needs. So those were two areas that jumped out as me that we might wanna look at aspirationally to have it become residential or something else.
What, do you know off the top of your head, without pulling up the city GIS map, what is the current zoning on that city parcel along Boyer? Is the current zoning compatible with future residential development?
That's a great question, but I don't mind pulling up the map, because this is fun, I get to drive. I don't get to do this often. Let's see, great question, Councilman. Is he here? I mean, you can see it's fairly underutilized, I mean, it's, it's just a big parking lot, basically. Where's my?
It's currently zoned.
I do not see my.
Industrial business park.
That is, oh, on Baldi, you're talking about.
Talking about Baldi and Boyer, the city-owned property there.
Yeah.
Industrial business park.
Can you pull up what the?
Forest Service.
Forest Service is zoned presently?
That is, orient myself. Okay, Forest Service is.
I think it's.
Green, what's green?
That's commercial C.
Commercial C.
Okay.
Yeah. So what's interesting is that current zoning doesn't necessarily conform with the future land use map in our complan.
Because we never got there.
So another thing to point out is that if we, if the city partnered with the land trust to do, you know, community housing type situation on that city property, it's, it's possible that a, well, obviously, a zone change would be needed, but so would a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use planning map. And we've seen those throughout the years, and those are not a big deal, we can amend the complan map. The question is that quasi-public future land use designation, like, are we just applying that to all publicly owned property or school district owned or church owned property right now? That, that seems to be what we're doing, but as an aspirational vision, like, what's the point of that? That, that, that's kind of what you're getting at, right? So. I don't have an answer, I'm just pointing out, like, I kind of agree with you that it, it seems to be, well, we don't know what else to call that, so let's just call it what it is now, quasi-public.
Yeah.
But who's to say it has to always be public?
And I don't think there's a huge risk in, I mean, we're, we're basically just signaling though to developers, to future leaders, this is what in two thousand and twenty-four they wanted for this area in the future. It's not so much a risk that if we get it wrong, we can't change it. But it, it is a big signal, sort of, and could direct dollars and, you know, research towards, is this the right spot for something?
So right now, it's like an industrial use, light industrial warehouse type. And so it's proposed to be public because city owns it, that's pretty much the only.
And there may have been rumblings of, or dreams of a city shop there someday, you know, right now, we're out by the airport, if you're not aware. You know, if that road were to go through, it'd be super convenient, they could jump on and loop downtown and. You know, I. We, we can come back to this at the hearing. You know, the, the one, the one thing I should point out that, and our attorney is here, Zach, I should point out that if we were to make what they would determine as material changes, we'd have to re-motus it, go through the hearing again. So it'd be nice to get this right as we go into the hearing, and any changes would be publicized. So. I guess the lack of clarity on what we wanna call it, I think, especially the Baldi Mountain Road. I think that one's maybe too much up in the air, we don't know, and quasi-public would work. But boy, the, the Forest Service one, that one, I, I, I would, I would ask you to consider changing that to maybe medium density residential.
Mr. Mayor? Councilman Trevor first. Yeah, I guess my question and comment was more about privately owned lands. For example, right across the street from the hos- high school there is a church with a lot of undeveloped land around it that's currently zoned mixed-use residential.
Yes.
And under this land use, it would never be mixed-use residential, it would only be a church. And a church only takes up a small part of that, I think it's two acres. So we're really limiting the use of that two acres. If that church decided they wanted to sell that property and move their church somewhere else, that property could never be anything else, right? And that's a private, piece of private property, not a city-owned piece of property.
Yeah.
And so I, I guess there's lots of other little blue dots on this map where it's a piece of private property that is the only island of that land used surrounded by other land uses. And it's, I'm not really familiar with planning and zoning, is it common to zone one particular parcel completely different from everything else around it? Seems a little.
If it's a ask, it would be a, what you could call spot zoning, unless it's consistent with a future land use map. In this case, don't forget that if the church goes away, that, like, for example, the Catholic Church, that is currently zoned residential, single family. So if they split some of that land or it went away, it could be residential development there. So this is the aspiration of to guide your future zoning, if there's a zone change. There's nothing that's gonna require us to change the current zoning today of these properties.
So, Mr. Mayor, I had a question about if there was ever a spot for like a park and ride, a park and bike share out of town, at the edge of town to keep traffic down from in town? What would it be, would it be quasi-public or?
Yeah, those are also allowed. I wanna say our commercial zone actually requires them to be associated with a business. So it would have to, yeah, quasi, quasi judicial, I mean, quasi-public would be a site for that, I think. Unless we changed our commercial zoning to allow parking lots as a standalone, independent use.
And we're just thinking of that church, if it moved, that parking lot is huge.
I don't think the Catholic Church is gonna move anytime soon, but.
Just thinking, spots to keep people out of town with their cars.
City parking lot, we could obviously use, existing parking lots we could use.
Yeah, but they're right in town anyway.
The only other spot I wanted to mention, oh, I guess my question or comment or ask is, would the council, would anyone object to USDA, this area behind the high school, converting to residential multi-family? And to be clear, just for record, I have no clients, I don't represent anyone that's interested in that. I'm sincerely just thinking, in the future, if the Forest Service moves to someplace out on the highway, we're gonna wanna direction, maybe other than quasi-public, to look to rezone that land.
There's a lot of nice green space in there.
There is some green space and.
Passive.
It's a balance, yep, yep, it could be a part. It could also be housing or.
You were saying earlier that we're gonna have a glut on housing?
I, I think we will have a glut.
I'm just saying. We're gonna have no trees.
Commercial zoning, that doesn't really make sense in that neighborhood, right? In that location, unless it's like a Ammar or something like that.
Yeah, you should.
Yeah, I mean, you can have apartments in the commercial zone, so I guess that could be, that could be, if we jump forward fifteen years, Forest Service moves or sells half that, we would look to what kind of zoning allowances would be there. And right now, it'd be commercial C, that does allow fairly intense commercial and apartments. So I guess there could be housing there above, above the ground floor.
I think that, Mr. Mayor, I think the, generally, the, the quasi-public future land use designation is kind of a cop-out in this complan. It's kind of a lazy designation, because it's not aspirational at all, it's just identifying what it is now. I mean, I, I don't know if anybody here has an appetite for just striking it all together and saying, let's actually apply future land use and, you know, aspirational designations that make sense. Because I, I agree that something like our city property on Boyer, there's probably an opportunity there for some sort of workforce housing development in the future. But considering that we've got this vague designation of quasi-public, like, we are gonna have to amend the complan to make that possible in the future, to rezone that from industrial to something else that fits with the complan. So.
And as you said.
How, how much do we wanna go in and like find every piece of quasi-public property in here and say, okay, where do we, where does it, what should this really be?
No, I, and as you mentioned, the county amends their complan quite frequently. There is some language in Idaho code that says you should only do it once every six months, and I've never figured out where that applies specifically. But, yeah, we currently have the ability to amend the complan if we need it. But, yeah, we currently have the ability to amend the comp plan if we need it. So I think you're right. It's a good placeholder. Balancing the desire to move forward with this document and not spend a month figuring out the map. I would say, yep, let's keep going. The other, other, I just wanted to point out right now is Large Street. I know we have a member of the public here who owns property here. So this is, uh, it was a big change in '09 to go to a, a commercial designation for this area. And it looks like in this little future land use map, it's going back to medium density residential. Um, I just point that out, just it jumped out at me as an area. That was a, a pretty big change from what we've got today. And I'll just show you on the map here. I think you're aware. Right now, that's commercial B up there off of Large. I just throw that out. If anyone wants to do anything with it, feel free. Otherwise.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Duncan.
I'd say those three blocks or a little more. It's in a, it's surrounded by commercial and higher density, and it's, it's close to the downtown core. It's, and full disclosure, I live in that neighborhood, so. There is, uh, down, down Forest Street, there's, uh, office spaces and small businesses, so it's, it's an appealing neighborhood for more than residential. So, and I'm not sure what the medium density, if it allows money. I don't think it does. So I, and as I said, living in that neighborhood, I'm there all the time, so. It's questionable to me that that matches like future land use desires, I think. Especially on the one where the arrow is.
Yeah, that's what you're talking about.
That one should be, that part for sure should be commercial because it already has that use.
Uh, the, the house is on the north side of Large there?
Yeah, I, uh, I think it was a real estate office, kind of out of a home in that one of those houses.
You know.
And may, maybe a couple of other things along that street, but.
When we went to commercial, that was residential in '08. When we went to commercial, there was talk of, because the byway was coming through, you had a view, great view of that. There were talks of a hotel, exposure for the passing travelers. There's the opportunity for commercial docks down there because it's on the water, gas, with gas and go. So there are a bunch of reasons that, to my recollection, in '09, they went with a commercial designation. Then they changed the zoning to commercial. Again, I, I just see that it flips back. You know, it's commercial today. No one can force, can't really force it to go to residential. I mean, you could, but it's not a great practice. So it would stay commercial, but again, aspirationally, this is looking at to go back to residential. I just point that out. Those were two spots that jumped out at me this. And then the final one was this, I don't know where this corner came from. But it looks like that corner is a corner of.
Lighthouse property.
Yeah, it looks like downtown or mixed u- mixed-use corridor. So that one just. Sound out. So. I didn't have any other comments. I'm not really asking for anything. I just wanted to point things out there to folks. It does look like there's some public comment on this one.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Schreiber.
Yeah, I, I wanted to comment on, or at least point out one of the public comments, number 62. About adding neighborhood mixed use on both sides of layer. Just wanted to start a discussion about that. Because I do feel like that neighborhood is a little isolated from the rest of the commercial and could create traffic problems if everyone in that area had to drive into downtown to for all of their daily life.
I, I presume the comments talking about that mid-section of Boyer, basically old U of I property.
Right where the 62 is.
Yeah. We do have mixed use on the west side of Boyer there. I, I mean, yeah, it's, it's for you, you to determine. You know, that area is somewhat platted. The northwest side of the U of I property is unlikely to go through its final plat just because the time's going to run out. So that area has, will have to come back through the plating. Whether the developers, former client, not a current client, I don't talk to them anymore about this stuff, but whether they would want to change their original vision, if you did change that, they could potentially come back in and ask for a, a more commercial mixed use designation. You know, we have all that on the west side. Obviously, if someone's on the east side, it would prevent queuing and people turning and. Uh, I think it's a valid question. And I'll put that to you.
I guess I just don't see any reason to prevent it. It doesn't mean the developer has to create commercial there. They just have the opportunity to.
And I'd also point out in 2018, there was a city-led visioning effort for the U of I, and it did include some commercial on the east side there. So what I would suggest to, uh, Commissioner Schreiber is if that's something you thought was like the change, I know everything south of that 62 has pretty much been platted, infrastructure's in, there's a PUD in the process of being finalized, but that western or the. This area here is a future phase of Mr. McDonald and Kinney's development, and they never final plotted that, so. If, if that's something you would, the way this works is if, if you feel compelled, you could suggest that you wanted to change there. If there's consensus, we could look at that.
I suggest that we change that.
Any other council members have thoughts, one way or the other, on that? And Councilman Schreiber, are you saying just on the unplatted areas or just in this, this unplatted area, are you saying everywhere along that corridor? Everything else is pretty built out all the way north.
Right. Although, you know, some of those properties might redevelop at some point, the ones that are directly on the highway. I mean, certainly the neighborhoods behind the highway, or not highway. But there are some, and again, that church that's quasi-public might someday be something else, so. I don't see any reason not to offer people that option.
Because it is now.
Neighborhood. Mixed use on the side over here. Exactly. This isn't built out and certainly would match that side that's already designated that. But even some of the.
Gas, yeah.
Could be redeveloped into something that could be beneficial to the people that live out there.
You're saying, these two areas I've circled on the map are areas you're thinking about, you're suggesting that we change to a, a pink on the map?
Where the O62 is.
I, I drew a box around them.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah.
Here and here in a circle.
I think I'm open to discussion on it, but. I thought it was a good.
There's already approved preliminary plat for 154 single-family home development in that southernmost area outlined. I understand the final plat's coming through this year, so if we talk, those houses are going to be there for 100 years.
Wait, where? In the boxes that you just drew?
Yeah, the southern one, along East, East Mountain View Road and Boyer. That's phase two of the University Place subdivision. That's happening now.
Didn't you just say that?
It's, it's been approved on a phasing schedule for final plat. I believe that preliminary plat expires in 2025, so. If that expires, they would have to reapply for a preliminary plat again.
But unless we changed the zoning now, as soon as we adopt the comp plan to match the future land use map, it's pointless, and that would also be considered a taking. I'm almost certain if we.
It was a taken. We're adding options.
Because single families, is that allowed in mixed-use residential?
Yeah, mixed use.
It allows for single family.
But of course, we're going to change the zoning after we about this, but. I don't think it would be a, and Zach, by the way, feel free to jump in if I'm.
Please.
Making you uncomfortable.
To be perfectly honest, I think it could complicate things. If this change, I don't think it's going to make a huge issue here, but in that specific issue, my burning hackles are racing.
Because we're talking about a specific piece.
Well, that too, but. I can see it complicating things.
If, uh, if it was granted for that whole corridor, if it was like an extension of the, the current corridor, would that pose the same issue or?
I think the ship has sailed on this. If the last comp plan had zoned, had, you know, presented this as mixed-use corridor, perhaps we wouldn't be where we are with University Place today, but I think it's a little late.
Any other council comments?
I agree with Councilman Walker.
Any other council comments? Any other counselors want to pursue a change in the land use map?
Not a, I knew your hackle service.
You guys have these conversations now. We can deal with it on that.
Yeah, just saying.
Billable hours, they're happy.
All right. I'm not hearing a compelling direction, Councilman Schreiber.
I've got more.
Okay, on the map?
Yes.
Fire away.
So in a couple places around the document, we talk about attached housing around downtown, in and around downtown. I noticed there's a few places in and around downtown where we have low-density housing. One being Boyer to Short Ave between Large and Main and Boyer to Second South Lake. And I guess I'm just wondering, for the people who spent so much time on this document, why there is the contradiction there that we're saying we want higher density around downtown, but then we didn't change the land use on those places?
Um, I'll just, before they answer, I'll, there was a very active citizens group called Save Sixth Ave. And we did this the last time in 2009. Some of you may remember it. That's why that yellow dot, yellow, these yellow blocks exist like that. They were pretty opposed to changes towards multifamily in that. Very, very opposed.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Duncan.
I had a comp to reiterate what you just said. It's, that was pretty much the basis for that neighborhood to stay as it is. And we did, we did discuss that, and I think the, there was some back or pushback against changing it because it's, uh, you know, the, the street's narrow and there's trees and, you know, it's a lot of older homes. It's kind of the equivalent of the south part of town. And it was a somewhat of a historic situation. So I can't say, I personally, I was in favor of opening the possibility for, you know, because a lot of those houses are quite a bit older and, you know, not to say that a, you know, newer place couldn't look just as nice, but have a little more density.
Right.
So I, personally, I was in favor of, you know, a change. I'm in favor of trying to maximize the ability for more people to live in town.
Yeah.
So I, I felt like, well, we're making that neighborhood, eventually it might just be priced out of range for just, just about everybody. So even though a lot of those houses are smaller and are quite a bit older, I don't know, I, I questioned that too. So I, I personally, I was open to it being changed, but.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Lamar.
Just one comment on Sixth Avenue. I have some clients that, or die. The bulbous on Sixth Avenue.
Yeah.
Created no parking. So if you're going to go density on Sixth Avenue, the northern portion of it, you're going to have to make provisions of parking, parking spaces on the property itself as opposed to, because right now there's, there's nothing. It's terrible.
Uh, I think the residents may feel differently. They drove that project, but I, I understand what you're saying. I think it accomplished exactly what the residents there were looking for.
Well, Les Schwab likes it.
I will, I, I understand what you're saying.
We've had residents from other neighborhoods in South San Antonio come to council and beg us to do bulbous on the streets to slow traffic. That, that the residents want that in quiet residential neighborhoods because of.
Thirty-three years, I've never heard anybody beg for a bulbous.
Come down to, uh, go, go to, go to South Euclid on, at about 7:45 on any weekday, and you'll see why it's needed.
Oh, I know. That, they're, they're traveling fast down there.
No, that's, those are good points. I, I think the other thing that it's a, it's a bit not intuitive, but by, sometimes by changing to a higher density, you're actually driving up real estate prices unintentionally because now the developers say, oh, my, this house is worth a lot more because you could scrape it and put three up. Now, that's obviously works towards the goal of infill and efficiency, but at the same time, in the short term, it can have a pretty negative impact on affordability of our existing housing stock. It's, it's an interesting nuance to it.
It would also give a homeowner the ability to subdivide their house into a duplex or a triplex.
It would.
Add density that way without actually changing the neighborhood at all.
Yep.
So turn your garage into a, a unit.
Mr. Mayor. Council, Commissioner. What's that? How do you pronounce your last name?
Torpe.
Torpe.
Yeah. I was, I'm starting to think about what's under the ground, not what we're going to see when we drive around, walk around. And I, I guess my question is, when does the question of the capacity of the existing utilities under the ground, namely the water and the sewer system, play a role in the visioning, let alone, well, I guess the visioning, and then finally, any changes in zoning? Where does zoning drive the infrastructure investment that's needed to support that zoning? Or does the infrastructure capacity have a role in defining where we should increase the size or the proximity of one structure to another and, and the amount of
Context.
water that needs to be used to put out a fire or the amount of wastewater that's going into the, how, how, where does that play?
Can you just swear that you didn't, I didn't pay you to ask? If you read, I'll just get off on my soapbox for a brief second. When I ran for mayor, this was one of my concerns. We've done all these infrastructure plans and we've waited to do the comp plan. What if things like this start to happen? How does that affect our utility plans? So to answer your question, yes, this land use plan has the potential to authorize and cause zoning to allow higher density, higher intensity use. And the short answer is, we would probably have to go back and look at our infrastructure plans and revise those based on substantial changes in our land use.
Okay, and that would drive the connection fees and the other things.
Yeah, it, it would, I mean, it would be expensive and time-consuming and not ideal. That's why I always advise folks to do your comp plans first for my private side. So then your utility plans can follow, but right now, this, I, I'll tell you, this isn't a big wow land use map. It's, there's some incremental changes in here, but it's not like wholesale taking, you know, 20 blocks and making it high-density residential or anything like that. So I'm not overly concerned. But it's a good question and it's, it's spot on to understand what, what the implications of this are. So is the council interested in looking at a revision to this low-density single family in the Sixth Avenue area?
Yes.
Councilman Schreiber.
Might be on the red.
Put on your armor.
Do it. Yeah, for it. Good luck. And also the other one that I mentioned, which was Boyer to Second South. And also the other one that I mentioned, which was Boyer to Second South of Lake, which there's inexplicably a striker, stripe of higher density.
On the west side, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, between second and third.
Oh, sorry.
Somehow that's okay for higher density, but the rest isn't.
Between second and.
I really just don't understand.
First of strike.
Oh, that was a carryover. So when you did the plan in oh nine, obviously this is all balance of neighborhood and community feedback. That stripe had previously been, I think it's residential C at that time, our old, old residential zoning, which allowed that. So it was kind of a cop out, copying what was there, no changes.
Instead of turning something into
Yeah.
automatically.
Yeah. So that stripe is, was, and historically, maybe even since the early eighties, sort of higher density. This orange stripe right here.
The orange one.
Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's the background and history on that.
So you want to move it from low density to medium density?
Well, that just matches the, the words that we have elsewhere in the document saying that in and around downtown, it should be higher density. And then we put sections of lower density right outside of downtown. And so I think if we're going to keep this, then maybe we should reconsider that language, or if we're going to keep that language, maybe we should reconsider this. It's just contradictory.
Yeah, it, there are, I certainly acknowledge there are areas of low density residential near the downtown.
And again, I'm not saying anybody should scrape blocks of beautiful houses and put up high raises. I'm just saying to make it match what we're talking about in our document.
I, I don't, don't get me wrong. I, a lot of what you're seeing makes jives well with some of the vision and aspirations of the plan for sure. What I've experienced is with everything, it's also contextual in terms of neighborhoods and what the residents in these areas aspire for and are concerned about. So I would say there's two way to approach, choose ways to approach this. One is to make the change for the public hearing and see what kind of feedback we get. Which I would imagine would be pretty significant just based on the history of multifamily, single family fears and reality of scraping and apartments. Or leave it as is and see if there's an overwhelming call for us to densify it at that hearing. Either which, we can make those changes and do another hearing. Just trying to give you a big picture of how this flows.
It sounds like I'm on an island over here, so.
Well.
I'll bring you, I'll bring you a boat, but I'm not getting there.
You may, if, if the community is watching and engaged, which they are, you may, you may be pleasantly surprised with, you know, fifty people coming out at the next, at the hearing saying, Councilman Schreiber is absolutely right. You know, you should do that. So that's the great thing about this process is we'll get to hear from the public.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Simmons.
I get the logic and I don't want you to feel like you're on an island. And in a lot of the deliberations we had around this was, was that specifically of do we, do we pull the ripcord and rezone this as a higher density around the area of what's already a higher density? Knowing what the very likely backlash would be. We can give it a shot. And then in terms of that corridor, it's all high density. And so what do you do? Rezone it and just call it historical use? High density, but you have to rezone it a lower density because that doesn't really get you what you wanted to begin with. So that's sort of why it looks goofy as it does, if that helps.
Yeah.
But I hear where you're coming from.
I mean, we make some pretty good arguments.
Yep.
As to why it should be higher density closer to downtown.
Yeah.
From a public work standpoint, from a financial standpoint, from parking spaces and roads.
Yep.
There's a lot of arguments to be made why it should be higher density downtown. And then we turn around and didn't change our land use map. So I just figured I'd bring it up.
If I may make a comment, I know that one of the, the other side to that is that I think. Commissioner Hastings speaking.
Yeah.
I know that the entire process has been very transparent and a huge amount of public input. The reason this is the way it is is because the public said that's the way they want it. It's not because we arbitrarily said, let's do this, let's do that. This was because there was a whole lot of public input from those neighborhoods and other neighborhoods that said, this is the way we want it. And so that, that's a whole nother question. Does the citizenry have that option of saying, we want it the way it is, or does the greater good take that option away from them? And I, but that's the way it is.
And even the greater.
Why it's that way?
Even the greater good is debatable if that's the.
Correct, yes.
Sort of subjective.
That's a great point, Mr. Hastings, and thank you for bringing that up and my stick floats on the former, that, you know, this is a document that we build as a community. There's some balance there, but certainly neighborhood and, you know, citizen preference should be weighed heavily.
And that's fair. That's the kind of feedback I was looking for. Obviously you guys made this decision for a reason, so I'm just wondering why.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dunkel.
On that same topic, if, if we looked at the four thousand square feet, that would technically fit into those areas too, I believe. Which is a change to possibly higher density. And, and as Commissioner Hastings said, that, that was a topic. We, we looked at that funny first too and and the more we discussed it, it became clear that it just, it was going to be a tough, tough situation, where it'd be like the Sixth Avenue situation where the neighborhood would probably try not be into it. And maybe an area, maybe closer to downtown, maybe, but yeah, and, and kind of come back to like, this is a, you know, it's visionary, so it's not, it's not like set in stone that that's what the zoning is going to be exactly. And, and there could be a, a change to the plan down the road that, that could open that up if the public does say, hey, we messed up there, like it needs to be different. So I think it's a good start. And, and, and a lot of this is not a big drastic change from what we have currently because, you know, we didn't need a hundred people showing up, you know, because we changed so much stuff. So yeah, I hear you. It was definitely, it definitely was a topic that came up for us.
And then from, I guess you brought up a good point that somebody could actually ask for a zone change and a comp plan change. And could they use the language elsewhere in the document as justification and say, well, you said in the document that this is what you wanted.
Yep.
So therefore you should.
Spend some time at the Bonner County Administrative Building. It happens every. I might add one more thing. Commissioner Hastings, again speaking. There was another, when we look at changing something like that, there was another, just a few blocks south of there where there was a resident looking to change their zoning. For that to happen, they had to get the whole neighborhood together and the whole neighborhood had to say, yeah, we like that. That's the same sort of thing that would have to happen there. If there was a single land, landowner who said, I would like mine changed, it more than likely would not happen. But if they were able to get all the landowners in that neighborhood together to say, yeah, that change would be a good thing, let's do it. Then the zoning would go, the change, a zoning could go forward. But it, it's, it's not, you know, the spot zoning thing is the thing we try to avoid entirely. And, and the way around that is if you get your whole neighborhood to say, oh yeah, let's, let's do something different. But it's their decision, not ours.
Fair enough.
Other thoughts, comments, questions on the future land use map? All right. And we did tentatively schedule this for eight. I'm happy to go a little bit longer, but just keeping that in the in the back of your minds. The next page, page forty-five, this is the area of city impact. The color coded area is our existing. The red dash line is the projected negotiated area of Sinbat, city impact. Obviously it shrinks it, you're, where that, there's some legislation moving through the, down in Boise right now that would further encourage cities to shrink that or require them to areas they can provide utilities within five years. This is going to be a whole fun negotiation with the county and other cities. I'll point out this area right here. It's not in ours. It's not in Dover's. There'd likely be some discussion. Dover's installed a sewer line across Chuck Slu to there. Potential anticipation if McFarland's ever developed that to service it. So those sorts of negotiations will occur. And if you're wondering why this looks so erratic, just for background, I think it was two thousand six and seven, there were multiple, two thousand six, we went to arbitration with Dover to agree on what our boundaries look like. So I, I don't think there's a whole lot to say here, but entertain any comments or questions or changes if desired. Here are none. We will move on to page forty-six. There are some public comments. Any, my, my only comment, I'll just lead with this one. Goal two, there doesn't seem to a lot in here that really talks about protecting existing built neighborhoods or related matters. And I, I just am concerned without language like that. We don't have a strong incentive or direction to protect traditional neighborhoods. So no direction one way or the other. I just raise that as an observation.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Duquette.
I had a couple of additions that might help with that. In my, from my point of view, like, um, goal one. It, there's nothing about the wording in sustainability, sustainable development initiatives for developers anywhere in there that I see. Like C says, promote infill development and redevelopment to contribute to the desired mix of land uses. I was hoping to add something like with protections for sensitive lands and resources. It could be there. It could be several places. Like goal two, B, reasonably mitigate the effects of new development on existing neighborhoods, creating standards to protect heritage trees and native vegetation. Again, it's keeping the environment connected in the neighborhoods that I hate to see all chopped up and.
What works well, like that second one you mentioned.
Mm-hmm.
That, that seemed to flow and read well. It seems like you might have some language there. I would recommend that you propose to the council the addition of that and see if there's any feedback.
Council, what do you think about adding, creating standards to protect heritage trees and native vegetation? Under B, for residential neighborhoods, it's mitigating the effects of new development on the existing neighborhoods. Doesn't seem, you know, we say in our vision, we want to can, to keep the character and the green spaces and the trees, the urban canopy, but we're not putting it in the goals that I see. You know, it's in the vision.
I would support that.
My question would be illegal. Is there any property rights issues with that protecting? I buy a piece of property and I want to cut down the tree because I want to build something.
It doesn't say.
So there's a distinction between private property and
Oh, okay.
trees in the public right of way and, and really frankly, the, there's not going to be a lot of control that we can have over the trees in the public, in the private property sector, except that we can, we can incentivize protecting trees.
And I had that on like goal four, same thing to add incentivize, because we had talked about that before. To, to incentivize, educate the community on the value of urban forests and incentivize saving the trees.
To your.
I thought a lot of.
To your current language. Create standards, I would only suggest to address that issue is that we add create standards that encourage.
Okay.
Because that way we can try to look at carrots. I don't know if they'd be off the top of my head.
I don't either, Ben.
Maybe your building permit goes to the top of the list if you.
Something.
Mr. Mayor, we had, we had chatted about this a little bit in, in planning and zoning. And, and I would, I would advocate for this as well as that there's a couple places, and we'll get into some in chapter five, where we, I would argue should enshrine the notion of heritage trees in goals. And it's, it's sort of a hard language thing, although we haven't necessarily defined what that is. We've taken a couple stabs at it. I think we've got some experts in the community who can certainly help sort of craft the language around that. We, we, we allude to it in the implementation table. But we don't really flip to it in the document anywhere. And I think there's a couple opportunities. I think there's one of them. So that's just my two cents.
Yeah, and this is exactly the type of aspirational element that you could add a G, encourage sustainable building practices. So for residential construction, those sorts of additions, if adopted into the plan, when we're working on our zoning and policies, we can point to this and say, okay, we're directed to do that. So I think as long as it's an encouragement to our attorney's point, it gives us the latitude to pursue it without crossing private property issues.
Yeah, okay. Because we talked about quality, comfort.
Any other council comments on that create standards that encourage protection of, as, as stated in Cassidy grabbed?
On B for goal two is up.
Anyone opposed to that addition? Couldn't vote for the comp plan if that was in there. All right. I think we can add that and see where it goes.
Okay, and then, um.
Did you want to add similar language about encourage sustainable building practices?
Uh-huh.
For residential development is G. Any council members have comments, concerns or preferences on such an addition?
I would support that.
Anyone didn't vote for the comp plan if that was in there?
Okay.
Uh, any other comments on this page?
Well.
Don't be shy, Councilwoman Duquette.
I'm trying not to.
You have till eight, so.
Three hundred and.
I know.
Two hundred and fifty pages to go.
I'm just, and, and I, I just think a lot of the goals are vague and I don't know if they are to remain vague.
Yeah.
Or like H on four, required developments to.
You're on the, you're not on page forty-six anymore.
Oh, sorry. I'm stepping up on forty-seven.
Okay. Anything else on forty-six?
No. I could handle.
Anyone? Who wants?
Did we look at what, if somebody else said sixty-five and sixty-six?
I'm operating under the presumption that we've looked at all these comments and are prepared to speak on them, but call me out if I'm wrong.
If I may make a comment, Commissioner Hastings, on, on your point, and that is that yes, intentionally, these goals are meant to be vague.
Right.
The more, then the implementation plan becomes more specific and then code becomes very specific. So it's kind of almost a three step process. This is a guiding vision. It's not a specific plan. But the implementation is fairly specific and then the code is law. It's not law, but it's close. So, but that just kind of answered that question. They are vague. Part of that is intentional.
Okay.
But it is important. I mean, it could be important to have words like sustainability. And one of the things I like about that is.
Especially because we've got sustainability, sustainable development, little icons on all these pages and I don't see.
Action.
I don't see, yeah, I don't see it happening.
And well, and a good part of that is that what does sustainable development mean could change over time. So it's nice to have it.
I have definitions to put in our definitions on sustainable.
But that can change over time.
Okay. And, and that does cover future.
Right, correct.
Sustainability. Okay. Um, okay. Did we want to, we looked at those.
Okay, moving on to page forty-seven.
I think we did.
Any comments there? Anyone?
Sixty-eight.
Uh, page forty-seven.
Oh, sixty. Yeah, there's quite a bit on goal four. There's one, let me see, oh, sixty-eight. It'd be great for the city to purchase land to expand parking.
I'm sorry, you're saying comment sixty-eight?
I'm looking at.
We're on page forty-seven.
Yes, and I'm looking at the public comment. Yes, and I'm looking at the public comments.
Public comment sixty-eight. Standardized bike parking ratio of one to ten.
Right, and sixty-seven too, it talks about what I was saying, purchase land to expand parking.
Yeah, that's a little out of, out of the scope of this right now.
And I think those are all, okay, there's mature trees.
And just on sixty-eight, we do have a standard, who has gone through site plan that does require parking, bicycle parking.
Right, and number of bike parking. People look to initiate new standpoint neighborhoods program, and we talked before that the neighborhoods program is still working. We did that somewhere else last time, because that was comment seventy-two. Encourage buildings to address street skate.
We're almost to chapter five.
And, and so on the bottom of, on page forty-seven, when we're talking about H, required developments to provide adequate and safe onsite infrastructure for vehicles, pedestrians, cyclists, I'm wondering about adding, if it's necessary, what that would be like, park and rides, bike share, EV parking options. Does it have to be that specific to say what we're thinking that is, because just infrastructure?
I'm assuming that's EV charging or maybe hydrogen charging in the future or something else.
Because if this is a vision in twenty years, who knows what sort of infrastructure that would be.
I think it's trying to cover.
Okay, so it doesn't need to be. Okay.
Any other comments on page forty-seven? All right, page forty-eight.
Mr. Mayor. Assuming we get through chapter four, shortly, are we, are we going to open up to public comment at that time?
Um, yes.
And are some on goal five for the public?
Any comments on page forty-eight? Insertions, deletions.
There are some.
From the council.
I'm sorry.
So I'm, I'm operating under the framework, the council's seeing these comments and are there some that you think are, that you want to champion?
Mr. Mayor, one question on this one, it's around comment seventy-four, in that, sort of the spirit of this is, as you extend the area impact, how do you enshrine sort of the same preservation as you extend? I think that's sort of how I read this comment and I don't know how we sort of tackle that or if this is the right place to do that or if that's a consideration, but it feels like if we made it earlier, do, does it, is there any sort of special consideration that needs to be made relative to preservation, heritage trees, things like that, as we extend into impact areas?
Yeah, so the way the area city impact works, the negotiations will be a little bit, well, they're, they're going to be real interesting. I hope to work with the neighboring communities to approach Bonner County in number instead of as a individual city, so that we may have some greater leverage. There's been a recent development outside of the city of Kootenay in their area city impact that the city was not in favor of and asked for certain things to be done. So right now, if there's a development in our ACI, we get noticed, we get the opportunity to comment on the file to the county, but they're under no obligations to implement any of our comments or requirements. Things that we would probably include in a more robust agreement with the county or understanding, things like curb, gutter, sidewalk, stormwater maybe, pathways that we have identified, so that when those lands develop and at someday when they are annexed, we don't have to have a substandard neighborhood and they're ready to go, we don't have to rebuild sidewalks because they can put in, because the county and those developers know this is what the eventual standards will, will be. So it's a clunky process between development occurring, what standards are appropriate at this time, and when annexed, does it meet our standards? So I don't really have an answer to that, other than that comment is suggesting like that goal provides that flexibility.
Yep, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schreiber.
So during the last public hearing on this, as a citizen, I commented about the removal of a, a goal from the pre, our current comp plan and that, that goal says, deny extension of urban service in ACI for low-density development. I also recommended that we add something about respecting other cities' ACIs when we make decisions about providing services. And so I just wanted to open that up for conversation and see if that was something that was discussed after that last hearing.
My favorite line in the existing comp plan, by the way.
Do you have a numbers of that, Kyle?
Oh, the existing comp plan, it's goal CD two dash E.
In the existing comp plan.
Yeah, the two thousand nine comp plan.
And I say that because we have ongoing litigation and numerous challenges a result of us extending urban services out of the city limits. It is a lot to address and I think if we could go back in a time machine, we might reconsider ever extending services outside the city limits. Do you have a proposal, Kyle, or you want to add those back in?
Yeah, I would like to add that back in and also add, I don't have the exact language that I.
Respect, respect.
Not expand into other cities' ACIs without their express consent.
Well, we, we can't expand because it's their ACI, we'd have to go and fight them, make it our ACI.
No, not deliver services, that's what I meant.
That might be challenging for Zach and the legal team if we're, and this is the problem, from what, how I understand it, we have criteria for providing water service, for example, and if people meet the criteria, it could be sticky to suggest that we're not going to serve them even though they meet the criteria, delivering water. Zach, jump in if you have comments. So I think maybe some broader language that isn't strict, but is something more, more vague, like, you know, give great limit or, I don't know, it's a long day, creative brain's not working.
Can I ask you a question, Zach, here?
Feel free.
Can we legally deny the extension of water service into an area that lies within our water service area just because it's not in our ACI?
The short answer is probably not.
That's what we're talking about here. We, we've done that recently.
Sure.
But we could have been sued by refusing to do that.
It depends, it's going to be my lawyer answer on that one, in its, in its case specific, but to kind of move back to Kyle's point, I, I don't have the language that, I don't have the language from the current comp plan, but it says deny the services.
In our ACI.
In our ACI. Yeah, I did write it down word for word. Will you read it? Deny extension of urban service in ACI for low-density development. I can see why that was removed from the, this version. To be perfectly honest, I have a good answer for you right now, but I'm not super comfortable just.
Flip it to her, don't, don't promote or don't actively seek expansion of urban services. It's not as strong, but work towards, work towards limiting the expansion of aspire to, work towards limiting the expansion of urban services in R and other ACIs. That way, right?
Comment?
Commissioner Heesings?
Could it be something like, rather than the deny, but to encourage, and that's not the exact word I wanted.
Discourage?
No. Now, but to encourage the expansion of utilities to areas that are high density, rather than say taking it away from low density, we want to encourage it to areas where there's high density, just an idea, advocating, is that a way around some of the, or legal issues and still might get at that objective of encouraging higher density in the ACI?
It's closer, yeah.
My rub is, it's, it's really not fun, I can't even explain how unfun it is to, to provide services outside of the city limits.
Yeah, I wouldn't want.
I would go with maybe discourage with that, give us maybe a little more latitude, Zach.
That provides the wiggle room if necessary, rather than deny.
Yeah.
Better word for this issue.
How about that, Councilman Schreiber? Discourage?
Yeah, I'm, I'm open to that, yes.
Mr. Mayor, has a question, Councilman Torpitt? Excuse me, Commissioner. I'm not yet a councilman.
Was this an announcement?
No, no. So is the, is the ACI established so that, as you pointed out earlier, that things like roads, sidewalks would be constructed one time that would eventually satisfy the city's standards when and if, not maybe if, when that area becomes part of the city, right? So if I'm following this correctly, we have various land use designations within the ACI, one of which is low-density housing or low-density use, and we're proposing, no, we're just not going to send them our water and take their wastewater, et cetera, until they're part of the city. And so that implies to me right away that they're going to end up digging up all those streets that we so happily made them build in the first place to our standard so they can put those things in there eventually. What if, and I don't, I don't know how we could do it because it's not part of the city, but there are places that have as a condition that you don't provide them the service directly, but they install dry sewers and they install a, a distribution system with their own source of supply, so they become their own public water system, for example, and that they have their own onsite septic systems, but they have the infrastructure under that beautiful street that we told them to build, so that someday we do two things, we connect to the water main and they disconnect their well, and then we connect to the sewer line and they disconnect their septic systems. Has that ever been done in?
It's done elsewhere, yeah. I'm not aware of it, other than Lulu Court, where we actually extended the services, Pine Street, right here, if you're familiar with this subdivision, not annexed in, in the ACI, they put in curb, they did all that, we gave them water and, or we gave them water and sewer, yeah, water and sewer. So it's been done. One of the challenges though is, imagine the ACI filling out incrementally, a bunch of five and two and seven acre lots over the next twenty years, imagine trying to figure out a water line easement, where it's going to go, what the density is, people build houses, acquiring land, it's, it becomes super complex and challenging. And I'll say, historically, just getting the county to put on their conditions of developers in the ACI, something like street whis or right-of-way whis, curb, has been not only unsuccessful, but pushed back on pretty hard. We're in the county, we're never going to annex, we're going to stay in the county, we're not going to apply, you know, city standards to these areas, but your thinking is absolutely right, that is, that's how it should work efficiently.
Mr. Mayor, one question, sorry, Council, Commissioner Ramar, I didn't look at who I was. Just real quick, a simple, who pays the capital expenditure to get the lines from the city limits at Sandpoint to an area, let's say to the property line of the area being developed?
The development.
He'll pay for the, the whole sewer line running all the way up from Mark Connection in the city all the way up at the time of final plat or?
It was conditional approval, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But the problem is, without a coordinated effort, this is broadly speaking to a, a challenge we're having in an area where we serve water, there's piecemeal development, they put in a line, but the left hand's not talking to the right hand, is the next development out there going to need to double the size of the line and you're ripping up the street again? So it's great to have municipalities control their land use and know what kind of infrastructure they're going to need, it's hard enough doing that, now trying to do that as a utility provider to other communities, it's even more challenging. So hence the discourage extension or deny language. But the point of order right now is discourage extension of urban level utilities to A, the ACI.
And maybe, and consult other municipalities when providing services in their ACIs, something along those lines?
Yes, that probably would work, consult, yeah. Any objection to such an addition? There are none. Anything else on page forty-eight?
Yeah, I'm sorry, there were comments.
Yeah, I know there are comments, any comments you want to raise, raise to the level of discussion at this point? Or act on?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six, urge just document to call for more than just one off renegotiations is not the ACI, but for city leaders to initiate a broader, elaborate discussion among nearby cities, yes, that's sort of what I intend to do and hope to do.
Was on A, she had that bullet on A.
Is that something that we should put in the plan or is it enough that you say you're going to do it?
Well, I won't unfortunately be here forever, so I hope I'm not here for twenty years in the seat. So I would, yeah, I'd say renegotiate and actively engage adjacent communities elaboratively.
Not just in ten years.
I like that.
Okay, I need to.
Continually, maybe continually renegotiate and collaborate with adjacent cities. Any concern with such an addition?
I'm sorry, I just got the wording.
We're getting this, we're getting this down, we're going to keep going. Any other comments on additions, subtractions on page forty-eight?
Seventy-eight, where did seventy-eight go? Sorry. B, sure that all new development provides adequate consideration. Somebody had a comment on E.
E, which comment, seventy-eight?
Yeah.
No new buildings in existing green spaces in our current parks, no turf, protect our parks and grass areas.
So E, did you read E? Do you want me to read it or do you want to read it out loud?
Sure that all new development provides adequate consideration for and commitment to usable open space and parks consistent at Sandpoint's established level of service.
Is that covered, do you figure?
I think it's covered and I think making an assertion like that is pretty limiting. The reality is, in twenty years, Sandpoint's going to look a little bit different and who knows?
Hopefully just all green space.
What opportunities come, come before us, so.
It might be more appropriate to address that in a different chapter.
Yeah, maybe the parks.
I'd hate to preclude ourselves from building a swimming pool someday or an ice rink, there's a lot of amenities that the community has demanded over the years that if we put in our comp plan that we're committed to never building a structure in a city park again, we would.
And the structure is defined by anything.
No turf, protect our park, grass areas, and no turf.
I mean, that would prohibit a bathroom or anything. I get the intent and I know the historical frustration that some in the community have expressed about new buildings.
And the turf thing, sorry, never mind.
Yeah, turf, again, I have no less than fifteen emails in my inbox, people asking for more turf, so kids can get out playing earlier, so that's a hot, hot potato with lots of opinions. Yep.
Oh, you've heard that?
Any other comments on page forty-eight or insertions, deletions, or additions? Any other comments on page 48 or insertions, deletions or additions? With that, I would like to take an opportunity to let the public comment now that we finished that lengthy chapter. Thank you for your patience. Anyone from the public wish to further comment on chapter four? Yes, thank you, Ms. Fritz. You may comment, just let Melissa know your name.
Hey, Jane. Can you come comment up here in our microphone so we can capture your comments?
I'm a long ways from speaking.
Yes.
First of all, Jane Fritz, I live just outside, I'm in your probably area in packed, that weird thing on the map for Dover. I think I could see my property that I rent, actually, I don't own it. But a couple of things. First of all, I just want to say thank you to all of you here at the tables for your service because it is very complicated for normal people to try to understand. But having lived in the Sandpoint area for 45 years, I learned some things. One, I used to live in that house that I guess became a cottage area on Division at the end of Fur. There were the most beautiful trees in Sandpoint that were completely scraped clean, all vegetation and four houses put up. I remember commenting, but I did not understand what was going on. And it is so inconsistent with the entire neighborhood that I lived there in the 80s. My daughter's placenta was buried under the apple tree. So it was really shocking when that happened and it's awful to look at. And I don't think any neighbors really approved of it. So it's interesting to have that comment in the new plan about consistency with neighborhoods. So I just wanted to comment that I didn't know about this cottage thing in town. And so I learned a lot just listening tonight. And I do have to leave because I'm on deadline for a story and be up very late, too. But I wanted to say when you do get to the parks chapter, whenever that is, I've just haven't had time to really digest this document. It's quite, I keep having good intentions. And Mayor Grimm asked me to try to put some ideas together for the geese management of City Beach. And I intend to do that, I was hoping to do it by today, but there went another good intention, too many deadlines lately. And I'm 73 and I'm still working. So please give me a little time and, but I do hope to open your eyes to the last five years of what was done by the city for our geese at Sandpoint City Beach, which also occupy, I remember Commissioner Dunkle once mentioning the Traverse Park geese as well. So it is an animal that lives in our area and there are many things that can be done that are compassionate. So I do hope to provide that soon, Mayor.
Thank you, Jane, and I look forward to seeing your recommendations.
Yeah, and just thank you for your efforts because this is important, watching Sandpoint. I lived in town twice, once at that house that was completely destroyed and changed so dramatically. And I don't think those are consistent places for density, but that's just my opinion. And, but just thank you and I will be back in touch soon. I mainly wanted to come and listen tonight, so.
Thanks for listening and your comments, Ms. Fritz. Any other members of the public? You said, Melissa, know your name and step up to the microphone. And this is primarily focused on chapter four. So you can direct your comments on chapter four, we'll get into parks and.
You're fine.
I wanted to talk about trees, I guess.
Yeah. Okay, that would be preferable if you, if you can follow the process and we're just talking about chapter four right now. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, we have someone online, one moment.
And there's someone in the public, for you in the public, if you can give her your sign in sheet.
Heather, if you wish to speak, you're welcome to unmute yourself and speak.
Hi there, my name is Heather Flint Shadow, I'm an urban planner.
Just a moment, Heather, we can't hear you yet.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Getting there.
Okay.
A team has to warm up, can you?
Now, now you're loud and clear and preferably comments on chapter five and, I'm sorry, chapter four in just a couple of minutes.
Well, are you going to continue for chapter five tonight?
I'm not sure how much further we'll go. I'll, I'll take that comment from, if we are, we'll open up public comment again.
All right, well, I did want to just comment that you did bring up heritage trees for chapter four, and I appreciate that. So I wanted to support the recommendations that you made tonight.
Thank you, Heather.
As you think about parallel policy for flexibility to accommodate new growth, that that also translates to where you have your housing chapter looking at existing neighborhoods, that we've made a recommendation to make sure that there's the same kind of flexibility that can be achieved and add an additional, little bit of language to chapter five to, similar to what you have in chapter four, that right now you're maybe missing a little bit of the language you need to be flexible. And so I just wanted to relate that to what you have in your existing policy in chapter five. So I just wanted to point that out, that you've already got that sort of precedent. And when you get to chapter five, keep that in mind, that you're already thinking about how you can be flexible to accommodate for infill. And as you have existing infill development within your existing or new infill development within existing neighborhoods, that that ability to have flexibility to preserve heritage trees is something that's still needed. So when you get to that, I'll have more comments.
Thanks for tuning in. Looks like we have a couple of members of the public in attendance. If you can give the city clerk, Melissa, your note card and if you want to speak to chapter four, we would love to hear you. About, about three minutes-ish.
Hi there, Paige Hoffman, I'm not a city resident, I drove half hour to be here. Super excited about a lot of the language in chapter four, specifically allowing for some of the infill. And there's no denying that people continue to need houses. I think I'd appreciate seeing some language, a little bit more language of sustainability, just addressing not necessarily needing more turf, I'm not on that argument, but the albedo of the buildings that we could continue to provide. So I guess what I'm looking for is how could we add additional language to make sure that we're adding responsible buildings, both meeting the goals of the environmental challenges that we face being right on the water, but also all the residents that are moving in.
Sure, well, thank you so much. I, I think with some of that language we've added about encouraging sustainable infill development, when we go to do our zoning, we'll have the target language that allows that zoning to go further. But, you know, a lot of that's going to be encouragement, but just because we're in Idaho and the nature of private property and land use and zoning.
That's fair.
But we'll see what we can do.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Thanks for driving all the way up here or down or over.
I am Wesley Carey and I live on Pine Street. And I wanted to just comment the sort of feeling that I get in listening to the comments that you've made so far. This is sort of emotional, but, you know, you see South Sandpoint as a neighborhood that can't be affected. You see the Sixth Street group, we can't change that. But there are a lot of neighborhoods in North Sandpoint that have equal cohesion as a neighborhood, nice trees, all that sort of stuff. And I think that that is kind of lost in the discussions that you're having. It's kind of like that whole big orange area is a pre for all, do whatever you want. So that's just the feeling that I'm getting from these discussions that I wanted to comment on.
Thank you, Pam. And if it's helpful, just for context, I know it's not going to alleviate all of your concerns, but one of the challenges we face is the existing zoning and the existing rights of those private property owners in these orange areas. So it's a balance. It's hard to put the horse back in the barn, so to speak, if we've already have zoning that allows 45 feet or 35 feet and multifamily to reduce those entitlements of those owners. So that's the primary reason I think you're seeing the, a bit of the disconnection of the discussion of the areas because in these yellow areas, it's more restrictive currently. So the horse isn't out of the barn yet, so to speak. But I do take your comments into consideration, absolutely. And it's my hope that this document will enshrine some of those same characteristics, protections, values in all areas of Sandpoint. So thank you for staying and engaging and commenting. Anyone else? No? Good, Melissa? Okay, council members, I defer to you. We advertised this as about a two-hour meeting. My, my historical experience is that shorter, more frequent blocks were more productive. Having said that, I'm, I'm open to doing morning meetings. Obviously, it's a great value having planning commission here. Thank you so much, your context, your history, going through how you arrived at some of this is invaluable. Having said that, it's not easy to coordinate a bunch of schedules. So we can either proceed tonight, try to get through chapter five. We can continue our scheduling and just keep working on this every week or two until we get through it. I'd open the floor for comment or discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I think it'd be better to not start chapter five tonight and just get halfway through it and then forget about what we talked about the next meeting and just start fresh on a new chapter. That's my personal opinion. There will be a lot of comments and conversation, that's just the way these things go.
Yep.
Pretty short chapter, I'm just saying.
You're so new.
Oh, you want to see my comments?
It's your first year, right? It's been a half hour almost.
It's all right.
Can I have a one-on-one, other council members have thoughts?
I agree with you. I concur with you all.
All right, I think that, that is consensus. With that, I just want to thank everyone for your time. I know there's, there's concern and I'm as anxious as anyone to get this adopted so we can start working on the zoning. I know development has picked up. I believe there is a line at our planning counter this week for people submitting building, lot split, related permits. So I understand the pressure and the, you know, aspiration to get this done as well as we can, as quickly as possible. So we will reschedule for our next meeting, make public notice and keep moving, keep moving. So thank you all for your time. With that, I adjourn this meeting at 8:09 PM.